Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the Merriville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, April 8th, 2025 at 6:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for our invocation after the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Oh gracious God, our Father, thank you for allowing us to meet together tonight as a community, to talk about, to think, to dream, to plan, those things that will cause growth for our families, for people and individuals. Father, we thank you. Once again, we seek your guidance and direction with wisdom that comes from above. Would you bless the men and women in this committee tonight to make the decisions that will guide and guard our community? We thank you as well, Father, for those who serve and protect. May they continue to have your blessings of protection upon them and upon us as a community. We say all this in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please be seated. Mr. January, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal, Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Present.
Councilman Pettit.
Present.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Present.
President Bella.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, we have the acknowledgement of the receivable RDC annual report. Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, thank you, members of the council. This is a requirement under some rewrites or modifications of the statutes that the legislature undertook for 36-7-14 at Secuder. This report is one of two reports that are involved with the Redevelopment Commission. The Clerk Treasurer's Council Treasurer has already prepared one that was due on April 1st. This one is due by April 15th. This report was actually presented to the Redevelopment Commission at its last meeting and they approved it. The statute only requires, though, that this be acknowledged in the public record that it was received by the town council, and then from this moment, steps will be taken to file this no later than the 15th of April with the state through the Department of Local Government Finance Gateway Portal.
Do we need any type of action, Mr. Griffin, or are we just...
Mr. President, it would be no formal action by the council. It probably would be instructive if you, as president, would instruct that this be made a matter of record, that we received it if there's no objection from the council.
So be it. Any objections? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight, and with no objection, I'd like to move the public comment section from the bottom part of the meeting to actually do it now. This would allow for comments to be done about tonight's agenda, or any other topics, actually. The council is exploring a way to move this officially, and I thought we'd try it tonight and see how it goes. Any objection from the council? We're open for public comment. Any public comment tonight? Please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and we allow three minutes.
I'm Darian Collins. I live at 2505 West 65th Avenue. First off, moving public comment to the beginning of the meeting, I guess it's a little different because we can't hear the business before we make comment, and so that's a little strange. I think we need to hear the business before we can make comment, so that's my comment on that. But secondly, we're entering summer season again, and I have a water grandbaby, and I live in a community that does not provide enough water activity and water play. We don't have a pool in the community center. We haven't worked out an agreement with the high school where people can use the pool. Like, I think Hobart has an agreement where residents in Hobart can use their high school pool. And so, and I know, I was told that we were going to really explore a splash pad, and that's been a year or maybe more, and so we're going into the summer, no splash pad, no plans for splash pad, no pool in this large community. So I would like us to, I know we're talking about the future of Merriville and looking at a master plan and all of that, so I would just hope that we look at some, some water, some pool or splash pad activity. When you go to the, when you go to the Minor League Park in Crown Point, in front, there's a splash pad. The kids can play in the splash pad. I took my grandbaby to Schaumburg last week during his spring break because the Schaumburg Parks Department has a, they have four pools in a facility, and an indoor playland, open swim. It was, it was out of this world. It was almost like being at Wisconsin Dells. So the new Hammond Y has an outdoor playland associated, a water park associated with their three pools. So I would just like for us to make some plan, some agreement, that we're going to have some water activities, a pool or something, splash pad something, for the residents here. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Steve King. Just like this gentleman over here. I live at 763 Kenmare Parkway. The reason for my being here tonight was because I've been denied the ability to work in the town of Merriville as it relates to the fire inspector that you guys hired. This is in direct relation to the cyber infrastructure attack campaigns from the Chinese. If you guys want to call and confirm from the U.S. Cyber Command what I'm going to speak to you about as it relates to the SALT campaign, the Volt campaign, and the Flax Typhoon campaign. Those that are not familiar, you best think about it and at least research it. Hence why I don't use unsecure email. I've requested from the town, Mr. Griffin is aware, as well as Ms. Sheila Shine, if I could use paper and I would pay extra for that service. I've requested to use paper in direct relations because of the information I received. I tried to do it civilly, but I'm going all the way up the chain of command. I believe my amendments have been denied. We're going to start with the Fourth Amendment. We're going to talk about how I allowed to be secure in my papers. I want to just show the facts, lay it out. I'm requesting paper. I just, if there could be some way that it can be talked about, because I've been denied the ability, I've been slandered, defamated. I did speak to Mr. Eugene, his gentleman in the back there who's at court. I did speak to him to ask Veronica to see if I can get a copy of if there's ever been any judicial review, any adjudication for myself or my company, and if there wasn't, that's a due process violation, that I'm being denied the ability as a United States-born citizen, as well as a United States Navy veteran. So I'm just respectfully requesting if I could use paper, I'd pay extra, but if I'm going to pay extra, I want the fire department, the people that are earning the money, not the white shirts or any of the vehicles to get that money. I don't think it's a hard thing, but there's a contract with Livesafe, so that's a big issue. The Thirteenth Amendment, becoming an involuntary servant to a digital software program. Again, Mr. Eugene, the clerk, or the town court, is going to verify that I've never been in any trouble or punished for a crime, but I'm being told I have to use a software program and being refused the ability to use town hall. And this is the people's place of all business. I did speak to the clerk, Mr. Eric, and asked him if I could pay with currency or with bank check because my customers are very nervous about payment because of all the campaigns, we'll call them, not because I said so, people much smarter than myself at U.S. Cyber Command. But then I can show a bunch of other stuff, but there's zero lack of accountability and oversight. I believe there's waste fraud and abuse with the fire department, namely Inspector Pillman, who has defamed me and slandered me, but that's tomorrow when we, we find out that I've had no court actions. But then there's some other things. Because he's not the judge, jury, and executioner, I've contacted the state of Indiana for oversight of this body, so I would hope that this body here would do a service and not a disservice and fire him. On the basis of some of my complaints to the state and some of the other things, I know I've got three minutes, so, but at the end of the day, I did ask Mr. Griffin if there could be a review, as well as Ms. Sheila Shine, if I could pay with paper and pay extra and not use the software because of the SALT, Volt, and Flax Typhoon campaign. I would urge everyone to look at that and look at the two different types of email types that are out there, symmetrical and asymmetrical emails. Most people use asymmetrical. I use symmetrical, where you have to have a password per email. So politely, if you've never been hacked, or what the term would be called, email compromised, is a bad thing. It's really horrible, and when you have to call everybody, you never want to do it again. So I urge everybody to just take a look at it politely and offer an option to pay with paper. Thank you. God bless.
A look into it, Mr. King. Thank you.
Alabanyan 8031, Massachusetts Street. So last week in the last town hall meeting, we heard a few people mentioned by name Eric January and brought up some complaints about him, and my concern is that he, nobody stopped these people from naming him personally. The comments were made, but when I made comments about the nepotism happening in this, in this town council in regards to Sean Pettit, you tried to tell me I can't say it by his name. I can't address the councilmen's by their name. But you allowed several people to address Eric January. So does the rule apply to only certain people, or the entire council, or elected officials, or workers? What does, who, what does that rule apply to? I'm asking Mr. Bella about this.
I don't have an answer for you. It's public comment, sir.
So now it's public comment, so you allow people to make complaints about Eric January, but when I made a complaint about the nepotism happening...
Those were correct comments about something that Mr. January did, sir. You were talking in generalities about nepotism in the town and pointed to Mr. Pettit.
Sure.
Where other councillors have relatives working in the town, but you didn't mention their names. So you're, you were very targeted in your approach, and that's why.
But everybody was targeted in Eric January's approach, but that wasn't a problem?
It was a little different circumstance.
How, how is that different circumstances? So now, now there's a, I see there's an issue of retaliation here, because we've had numerous businesses come through here asking for application for business, daycare centers, restaurants, mechanics. Not one time, none of you has asked what's the maximum occupancy in, in their businesses, but gave Mr. January a hard time. The fire department didn't want to do the maximum occupancy, so he had to go down to the state. So I see there's a pattern here, and this pattern is, we've brought it up before, that involves systemic racism. A black man being attacked, but when a concern is brought up to a white man, we have a problem. We have to stop it. We cannot comment. And this is a pattern that I'm seeing, and a lot of people are seeing. So if we're going to be able to comment on people, we should be able to comment on everybody or nobody at all.
Brian Nessarch, 201 East 68th Place. I'd like to start off by thanking the Parks Department Committee for meeting with the Merriville Change Agency over the past couple of weeks to discuss our garden club and our bike club. I'd like to thank Jerry from the Parks Department, Matt from the Stormwater Department, Steve from the, the Street Department, everybody. All these departments have said that they are more than willing to support our efforts to get a community garden going. It's something that obviously the community needs something to do, so let's grow some food, maybe. I specifically want to thank Ms. Hardaway, Ms. Shane, Shauna, Haynes Edward, and Mr. Pettit, and I believe Ms. Neal was there as well. So hopefully we can get this off the ground. I was hoping that public comment would be at the end so that I could thank everybody for approving that, so I'll just plead my case. I would like to caution, as has been brought up before, the whole point of public comment is especially for taxpayers to redress grievances against their elected officials, and if we don't know what business you're going to conduct, or how you're going to say it, or how you're going to vote for it, there's no way for us to have any influence on you. And I know that the past couple of meetings, perhaps the influence that the public wanted to have was not the kindest, or maybe not exactly always polite, but we should consider having it at the end. That actually appeases the Indiana Open Door Law. By having it in the beginning, you tread very dangerously close to not following the Indiana Open Door Law, so maybe we ought to think about that before we make a final decision. Thanks, everybody. Have good night.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the Accounts Payable Register voucher for approval from April 8th, the ARPA Accounts Payable Register voucher, the approval of the town council meeting minutes, and the approval of the Council Affairs Committee meeting minutes.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, second amendment, Mr. Pettit, for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments? Hearing now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to presentations and declarations, I'd like to call on Nick to come to the podium, please. We have a special declaration tonight recognizing Father Theodore Pateras.
Good evening. Thank you. Town of Merriville Declaration, State of Indiana, the Town Council of Merriville recognizes Reverend Father Theodore Ted Pateras for outstanding service and dedication. Whereas, we are here today to express special recognition to Reverend Father Theodore Ted Pateras and to honor him for his distinguished 41-year service to the Lord as an ordained pastor. And whereas, Reverend Father Ted Pateras has served the Cathedral of Saints Constantine in Helen, Greek Orthodox Cathedral in Merriville, Indiana, for 28 years as Prostaminos of the parish. And whereas, under Father Ted's leadership and guidance, he has multiplied the number of ministries to help the Merriville community and overall larger Northwest Indiana region that are in need, such as hosting the Ross Township Food Pantry, Harvest for the Hungry Program, Feeding Thousands During the Holidays, the Winter Clothing Drive, the Back to School Supplies Program, and JC Closet helping provide free clothing to those in need, and physical and emotional support for all six AHEPa Senior Living Apartment Complex residents located in Merriville. And whereas, Father Ted led the parish of Saints Constantine in Helen to support and address the needs of local, state, national, and international needs, including helping with natural disasters. And whereas, Father Ted led the parish with the highest integrity and utmost humility to spiritually guide its parishioners, including the youth and outside communities closer to God, and be better citizens in their communities through the power of Christ's love and compassion. And whereas, Father Ted is a member of the Northwest Indiana Orthodox and the Merriville Clergy Association, and serves on many boards that offer services, grants, and donations for a wide range of causes and issues in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of Merriville, Indiana hereby congratulates Father Ted Pateras on his four decades of dedicated service to many over the years. His heartfelt God's work to here at home Merriville Saints Constantine Helen Parish, his care and involvement in organizations and programs to assist those in need, and for his leadership in our community. Let us now wish Father Ted all the best for a much deserved retirement and honor him today with this declaration, and ask all residents of Merriville to help us celebrate the amazing work and service of this wonderful servant of God. Congratulations and thank you, Father Ted. Congratulations on your retirement. Approved and signed by the following Honorable Town Council Councillors and attested by the Honorable Town Clerk Treasurer this 11th day of March 2025. List all the names?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion, council.
No move.
Second.
You have a motion and second to approve the declaration honoring Father Theodore. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
that I have of many past and current council members and workers for the great town of Merriville, but one memory sticks out the most to me is right after 9/11, when we had the prayer service here in this hall. And I hope and pray that we always keep that spirit in this great town of dedication and love for our fellow man, that we continue to do good work always. And just some of the things that we've done through, through our parish has reflected that feeling that we love one another and work together for the good always. So God bless you all, and thank you for this great honor.
Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, Budget and Finance, I'll call on Mr. Griffin, who has some notes from Council Neil.
Mr. President, I am standing in for the Vice President. I do not have her verve, but I'll do my very best. She did prepare some notes for me. Under this particular report for finance, although this could be beautification as well, she reports that the gateway signs have had the invoice that has been submitted. We've actually processed that for payment. It's been split between redevelopment and between general government for the small amount. As you know, it's a gateway sign to welcome people, and one is also for one of the parks to kind of give us a demonstration. I don't have a timetable for when installation will take place, and I will reserve the balance of this for those parts of the agenda where they're appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Street Department and Park Maintenance, Mrs. Uselak.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I have spoken with Steve King over the last few days regarding Chapel Hill, and they are requesting speed bumps, which are going up now, and stop signs, which Steve is going to put up a stop sign, I believe at 84th Place. Was that our address?
Yeah, 84th Place and Chase Place.
Okay. We have a lot of traffic going through there with the new subdivision, so the speed bumps are going up right now, so that should be a great help, which I hope. And then the Street Department is also doing a little bit of patching, and they will be doing paving, and I think everything will be taking place by the summer for sure. Is there anything else? Did I omit something, Steve?
Couple things. We are, the street sweepers are out and about. We've been on the, the main roads. We'll get into the subdivisions. One thing I want to touch on real quick is the trash. We, our department, we feel like we're garbage men for the town. We have cleaned up, again, the Whitcomb Town Homes, we cleaned it up last week, and I was by there today, and it looks like we were never there. Mattresses, couches, broken dressers. We just cleaned up, we just picked up stuff at a property over here on Madison 6701. We picked it up, had everything cleaned up. The next day, I got an email from Mr. Griffin. There was stuff still there. I drove over there, and somebody had come and drug a couch out over there. This, this is a nonstop battle that, that we have, and I don't mean just, you know, papers. I mean, I'm talking furniture, syringes, things like that, and it's, it's, it's becoming a major, major problem. I mean, you can drive over here off of 68th and Jefferson. There's been a couch sitting in front of these people's house for I couldn't tell you how long, so I don't know, are we supposed to get it? Is, is, is it a violation of some kind? But I just, it's, it's, it's getting overwhelming.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to bring that to the council's attention, that we, we try every day, and it's, the, the next day, it looks like we were never there, so it's, it's a major problem for us.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Moving on to Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Council Hardaway.
We do have an opening for labor for the Street Department. That is currently on the website. I think it also is posted on nd.com. Just want to let, that is a Labor, a Labor One position that is currently open, and it will close in about 10 days. So just wanted to put that out there. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Uselak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have received several phone calls regarding the waste management, and evidently, they raised their fees from $60 to $69 something. Now, I just want to stress, the town has nothing to do with that. In the phone calls I've received, people have, people have thought that that was coming from the town. It is not coming from the town. So waste management has raised their fees. We have nothing to do with that, as I have explained to several residents. And Steve has mentioned something that's really a great problem to us, going around and picking up all the garbage, the cans that are tipped over, garbage that falls off the truck. The Street Department has been doing a lot of that, too. So that concludes my report for now.
Thank you, Mike. Public Safety, Mrs. Hardaway.
No report, Mr.
Elections, Public Relations, and Town Beautification, Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, I don't have anything under that particular rubric. I do have something under Special Events, and then something under Lake County Solid Waste Management. Do you want me to present some of that now?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. So for Special Events, Easter is April 12th, for those who observe it in the Western tradition, and it will take place as an Easter event this Saturday at Hidden Lake from 11 to 1:00 PM. It's a joint program between, with the Town of Merriville and the Ross Township Trustees Office. This will run from 11 to 1:00 PM, as I said. New bike donations are still needed, or money towards a bike donation. I still have to get mine in myself. And also, if you participate in this, you'll receive a free seasonal pass to Hidden Lake with a new bike donation. Fourth of July details will be coming soon. The Special Events Committee is working on that. Parade and fireworks are being held on the Fourth of July, and that will be conducted at Hidden Lake. More on that as well. And then they'll have a meeting on Friday to discuss more details with this. And if you have your forbearance, Mr. President, I want to report, she has several matters for the Lake County Solid Waste Management District.
Please.
Latex paint collection will be on May 10th from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It'll be conducted at the headquarters, which is the Lake County Solid Waste Management District located at 8695 Broadway in Merriville. So remember, May 10th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for latex paint collection. Residential compost is also available by appointment only if you will call the Lake County Solid Waste Management District. House Hazardous Waste Collection is April 12th, so that's this Saturday at Munster Public Works. Paper shredding will also not be available at that particular time. This does move around the county. It does get more proximate to us, but as residents of Lake County, you can go anywhere where it's being conducted, and again, Munster Public Works, it is available for this coming Saturday. And then the next meeting for the Lake County Solid Waste Management District will be conducted in May. Mr. President, that concludes the reports from the Vice President, Ms. Neal.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, Mr. President. Yes, Mr. President, I'm going to call a Redevelopment Commission workshop, ladies, for 6 o'clock next Tuesday, the 15th. We will have presentations on the Whitcomb Street Corridor. We will have a presentation on the South Side Fire Station. The addition to the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and our esteemed Street Superintendent, Mr. King, will go through the second phase. If you remember, we laid out the ones and twos on the paving, and last fall, we did a bond issue to do the, the ones. We're going to look at doing the twos as well. Our financial advisor, Bob Swentz and Tom Pittman, will be there, and I would like to get some insight from all of you as to how to move forward on these very large, very much-needed capital projects in the town of Merriville. So that will be 6 o'clock next Tuesday, the 15th. So that will be 6 o'clock next Tuesday, the 15th, in the conference room.
Moving on to Utility Liaison, Mr. Chandler Felton.
No report. President Bella.
Parks Recreation and Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I want to announce, Michael, if you would make a note, and Jerry, the next committee meeting is April 24th. I'd like to move that up to 4 o'clock. I have a scheduling conflict that I have to be at for one of my neighbors out of the Preserve subdivision. It's extremely important to him. That being said, Jerry Pinchett, your first meeting preparing the agenda, you did an excellent job, my friend. Thank you very much. We talked about several things. The first item, Mr. Messrich brought up, at this time I'd like to make a motion for, to create the Rosenbaum Community Garden Project with the caveat, Brian, if you would accept it, that the attorney, we talked about the liability with you and Mr. Stroh about people working there, if they get injured, that sort of thing. So we'll get something put together and get in contact with, Michael will get in contact with you guys, whoever volunteers out there, if they can just, because they're on town property. If they get hurt, you know, there's a liability. We just want to make sure both parties are covered. So again, we love the project, we just want to make sure we're a little buttoning up things, okay?
I have a document that people have signed off on and have the whole harmless. If your legal wants...
Yeah, let's share it. That's a good idea, yeah.
Okay. I will second that motion. That is in the fourth ward, which is my ward, and Brian had contacted me on it too. It sounds like a real good project. I'm sure once you get it together and you get it going, it will be great.
The only other comment under discussion, Mr. President, if we could, to Brian and Al, the produce that's going to be produced, how are you going to distribute it? One thought would be, would you be willing to take it to the Northwest Indiana Food Bank up north, Broadway?
We're going to encourage people to have their own plots, draw their own plots, any additional...
Sir, you may have to...
You need to be on the mic.
Yeah, why don't you come up to the mic real quick, Brian? I'm sorry to question. Couple things came up in discussions.
I'll repeat for the record, we have a sign-up sheet for residents. It'll have our bylaws. We're kind of going through a draft and at the end is a hold harmless, participate at your own risk clause and you want your legal team to sign off, make sure it's okay. The secondary thing about, we are going to have people have their own plots, so we're going to subdivide it and we're going to encourage anything extra or any abandoned plots that have food, we're going to take them to the food bank of Northwest Indiana.
Okay.
Right on the street.
Very good.
I don't know what their stipulations would be to take that donations, but we're going to work with them, yes.
Okay. Okay. And Matt, you've seen, you've talked with Brian, he mentioned at the committee meeting in relation to the orchard and laying out the property out there, correct?
That's correct. And this is a pilot project with them as well, so if it does become something that is fruitful...
Or vegetable.
It will end up, you know, maybe expanding other areas. And even behind the food bank, there's over three acres behind the food bank. Maybe we encourage them to use that land for that purpose as well. And I contacted Chihi Well to look at getting a well drilled out there with a solar pump. So we'll see how that goes, because we're going to need some water to water the orchard anyway, so it can serve dual purpose for the community gardens as well.
Okay. That's all, Mr. President. We have a motion in a second, I think.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, for doing that. One of the things we looked at also at the committee meeting is, as the community center becomes five years old, we did all of the sponsorships throughout the building. A couple of them are of a concern that I'm going to talk to Jerry and Michael about, the Bozak Court and the Mike Anderson Event Center. But all of those sponsorships are paid through the end of February of next year. That money goes into a capital fund that we can use for refurbishing the floors or doing things that Jerry and his staff might come up with that need to be replaced or rehabbed. So we discussed that. We went through the building care and maintenance. I think we're going to do the Imperial Service Custodial, correct, Jerry?
Correct.
Okay. The HVAC system, according to Mike Neal, has been completely updated, corrected. He's been trained, he knows exactly where all the monitors are, so we should be very warm and comfortable in the winter and cool and dry in the summer there. We did talk about, in the parks, we talked about security lights and that also came up in the public input meetings for the five-year master plan we're going to talk about in a couple of minutes. And I think Jerry, you and Lisa were going to work on the camera issue for all the parks, correct?
Yes, we have to do another park tour to see what cameras we're going to add and then where we're at with the three camera systems that we have currently.
Yeah. Unfortunately, this comes on the heel of what Chief Nusis and Councilwoman Leona experienced in Stephick with the vandalism. We want to make sure as we go through in this new master plan, we take care of all of our existing parks, make sure they're safe for the residents to use and we upgrade the equipment. So that'll be coming. Am I missing anything, Jerry?
I don't think so.
Okay. And then again, Mr. President, later on in the agenda, we have a resolution to adopt the five-year master plan that the Arch Group has prepared for the town. Jared, with a lot of residents were there, I see in the audience at both input meetings, there was a survey conducted and then they came up with a five-year project plan for the town to consider, which includes ADA sidewalks. It includes the signage project that Vice President Neal talked about, has been working on. It talked about the development of a park in Ward Five, which does not have one. We talked about future potential sites and some other things, so that will be on the agenda later on. And then again, the regular committee meeting is the 24th, but I'm moving it up to 4 o'clock. Michael, if you could let Linda know that, I would appreciate it. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. Abandoned and blighted properties, Council Haines Edwards.
Thank you, President Bella. Cold calls for the month of March, there were 321 phone calls. Total warnings that were issued, there were 52. Total tickets that were cited, there were 17. Current abandoned building cases, we have 15. And blighted properties, we have six. So we are working diligently to get these under control and I thank Code Enforcement for doing their job, even with Barb. She's not here, but let her know. She even knocked on my door for a complaint, so nobody is off the hook. Whether you work here or live here, we expect for you to follow Code Enforcement. So, thank you.
I think there's an issue with Good Friday, is that right, Council?
Oh, yeah.
Since we're closed?
Mm-hmm.
You need to reschedule?
Yes, we will need to reschedule for that following week, but I'll talk to Judge.
There's plenty of time if we take care of that tomorrow, right, Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Notice-wise, okay.
We can get ahold of the judge. We want to make sure that any orders that he issued from the last hearing get modified because he may have identified this Friday...
Yeah.
...the Good Friday as the date. That's easy enough to fix.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Shawna, what about the Semi-Quintcentennial Committee?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, could we go back to parks? Keisha brought up a point to me, Jerry and Michael, on the cleaning contract, that the monthly rate is over a certain dollar amount and we felt like maybe we should vote on that on the floor, Mr. President?
What's the dollar amount?
I've got the contract in front of me. Michael and Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, the cost was basic was $3,068 a month. The deluxe was $3589 per month. So I think we probably should vote on the contract.
Because at the end of the year...
The contract, yeah.
Yeah.
Be $36,000, over $36,000 for the year, so...
Mr. President, that number is well below the threshold that both the state and our purchasing code require for bids, but it exceeds the $15,000, which is the threshold that any department head can commit, so we do ask that the board act.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is that for the cleaning the entire facility for $3,000 a month?
Yes. Three times, basic is three times per week, works out to be $3,068 per month and then deluxe is three times per week, works out to be $3589. And I apologize, I'd have to defer to Jerry or Lisa on the difference between the basic and the deluxe.
That's incredibly reasonable...
Yeah.
...for a facility that size.
And we're going with the basic to start out anyway. We can cancel with 30 days' notice at any time, so that's the extent of the contract. So we're going to start with the basic to do it as a pilot program almost, so, but I think it'll be very beneficial to us in the center.
So we had some people that were cleaning the park. Is this a supplement of what they were doing or are they being replaced altogether?
No, the custodial crew at the Dean and Barbara White Center will still be there, but this is like an overnight service.
Okay. That's incredible.
Plus it gets up higher, I think, Jerry, too. Some of the cleaning on the I-beams and up by the Union Lounge and all that, that are difficult for those two workers to reach. They don't have that. And plus you've got to clean the windows every once in a while on that high area, so...
Yeah, and I can break it down better at another time, but it's, this is more of a deep clean, whereas the custodial crew is keeping the place throughout the day, so it'll be better all around.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you.
Stormwater Management Resources, Mr. Lake.
Oh, thanks. Really quick, I prepared and submitted the MS4 general permit and a report to IDM. Actually heard back from Stacy Goodwin, the state MS4 Coordinator. She said received and reviewed and no deficiencies found, so that's good news. And we are also gearing up for our audit with IDM on April, scheduled April 22nd. I think we're one of the first to get audited this round. I always look forward to the audits. I just like going through everything and it just kind of validates everything. So this will be for MCM Four and Five, which is construction, post-construction, controls and compliance with Rob Beck. I want to thank Gary Sanitary District, I had a phone call with them today. They approved a conflict structure that's going to help us out with our Hickory Ridge Flood Control Project and so I want to thank them for their cooperation and it just demonstrates good government all the way around. Josh's Landscaping was the low quote for our mowing for detention, so they'll be out, they're already out and about right now. And we're gearing up for Talapia again for Bonner Lake. Now, this is for algae control. Lake and Pond Biologists, their contract was approved at our February meeting and so they'll be out next month to release the Talapia. We also delivered our second presentation to the Little Calumet River Basin Development Commission Board, they're the full board. This is for 50% cost share for our updated stormwater master plan. So I think it's going to receive a favorable recommendation at their next meeting and then we'll get the inter-local agreement signed and move forward with that as well. I want to thank Dyer Construction, they did an emergency repair at 61st and Johnson where Turkey Creek Lateral Six crosses 61st and so they responded quickly, did an excellent job and I couldn't have been more satisfied with what they charged us for that. And we're also looking at scanning more of our documents through ARC. We got a, we coordinated with Mr. Griffin on protocols and things like that, so we are wanting to move forward with that. So that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you, Matt. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission?
No report.
Council Hardaway? About the shared ethics entity?
No report.
How about the Fire Territory Board?
No report. I didn't think about that one.
Clerk Treasurer's Office, Mr. January?
Sure. I wanted to point out something before I actually got to my brief report. I had a question from a constituent today. Tax bills haven't been mailed and people are concerned about their taxes and I just wanted to reiterate, because they contacted me, we do not issue tax bills in the town of Maryville for your property. That goes through Lake County. So if you have an issue, I would encourage you to go to the Lake County website, which they just revised, if you want to find out about your taxes. So now, in terms of the town, we had no fraud or violations of the internal controls within the Clerk Treasurer's Office. That's something that we often have to maintain because we deal with millions of dollars. No payroll hiccups. Tax changes are in the works that are definitely going to affect the town's budget and in that regard, this year, to date, we've got $42,000 and $44,000 and $68 in the bank collectively. Most of that is with the RDA, 16 million. And year-to-date, we've had $10,288 and $767.19 in revenue. And when you compare that, this is the first quarter of the year through March 31st. You'd think that we'd actually have more than that, but reality is our receipts come in at two major intervals throughout the year with property taxes. So that's why our year-to-date revenue is only 10 million versus should be about 15 million. But when you annualize it, it reaches about 67 million for the year. And I believe also, yes, the food and beverage tax, which hopefully we'll be able, I know we're already talking about using some of this money for something that people can appreciate in the town and I think every council person up here wants to use it so people can see things like, people are requesting like splash pads and things of that nature, but year-to-date this past month, we got $137,926.89. I think it's going to be a great thing for the town when we start putting this stuff to work. And lastly, I wanted to mention, thank you Pablo for saying what you said and also wanted to mention, just in terms of the acrimony that a lot of the town has experienced, I really feel like, and I told Mr. Griffin this, I'm not driving with a rearview mirror. I really feel optimistic about the way that the town is moving and I'm looking forward to working together as a team so that we can accomplish something great for the town because all of the things they're proposing downstate is going to take all faculties on board to make sure that the town is not at a loss of revenue because they are definitely talking about reducing property taxes and that is the majority of our revenue. So, and then the things that are going on with the economy, with the tariffs and things like that, people being concerned about a recession, things are going to slow down, the stuff that Mr. Pettit is over. The RDA is going to be definitely negatively affected because they're talking about getting rid of all 25-year bonds and a lot of the stuff that we do with TIFs. A lot of this is if, none of it may ever pass, but people are certainly talking about it. And I know at the end of the day, we all have different skill sets and we've got to work together to make Maryville one of the best towns in the world. Thank you.
Jerry, Park and Recreation, anything else to add?
Yes, just that we have activities live on our website as well as Mr. Chaz Riley updating our activity section on our website. So there are opportunities for adult and youth dance and yoga, youth basketball and youth football registration is live right now, so please go check that out. And thank you, Chaz, for updating that. It looks a ton better than it used to and now it's more accessible to get to rec desk to sign up for activities. I also want to point out, we settled on dates for a daddy-daughter dance and then also a mother-son activity night. The daddy-daughter dance will be June 13th at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center and the mother-son activity night will be August 15th at the center as well. So be on the lookout for advertisements with that and please come and contribute in any way you can, if that's either volunteering or spreading the word, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Police Department Chief Nusis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to announce and remind everybody that Thursday, April 17th, 2025, we will be having Coffee with the Cop at Panera Bread, which is located at 303 East 91st Avenue, from 9:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. This is an opportunity for the community to get together and meet some of your local officers and have an exchange of words, pleasant and polite words, I'm hoping, right? So you get to have that opportunity to talk with them and kind of get to know who they are and I think it's great and it builds relations within the community. The second thing I wanted to talk about, I really wasn't prepared, so I'm going to ask Mr. Griffin to step in and correct me if I'm wrong at any point. It's something that the Clerk Treasurer touched on and that's kind of what compelled me to make mention this, and that is 2025 Senate Bill One. Senate Bill One is something that was created downstate and what it does, it aims at capping and cutting property taxes. For a lot of people that don't know, our property taxes here are what funds our local police departments, our local fire departments and our schools. This is all based off of the assessed value that each municipality is given by the state and this is where we get our funding. I don't have the exact numbers, but just looking at some of the fire department's numbers, it's alarming to me. I've been coming here for the last, almost now three years, attending these council meetings and I appreciate everybody's passion to get the point across, to get what they want done is power over the people. And at this point, I am urging everybody, better yet, I'm begging everybody, to find a common ground to fight this Senate Bill One because we are going to be in significant trouble if it passes. This is what I want, all this passion, all this energy... This is what I want, all this passion, all this energy, all this, should I say rage? That's probably not a good term, but all this that we have here, that all this that we demonstrate here, we need to fight, because the way that it's looking, it's probably going to affect us in a really bad way. Maryville doesn't have a lot of money to begin with, and they cut any, what they're proposing to cut, we're going to be in significant trouble. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, excuse me, Chief Nusis, could you repeat the date for your Coffee with the Cop?
April 17th.
Thank you.
It's a Thursday, and it's from 9:00 AM till 11:00 AM.
Thank you.
Planning and Building Department, Sheila Shine.
Yes, Mr. President, and members of the council, regarding the town homes on 73rd and Wickham, so most of those homes are rented, so the Planning and Building Department sent a letter to all of those owners reminding them that they, as the owners, are responsible for that property and not the tenants. Many of, I got two phone calls from two owners, and he just couldn't understand why he was responsible, because he don't live there. But I reminded him that the owners of the property are responsible for that. So a letter went out to all of the owners of the Wickham Town Homes on 73rd, reminding those owners of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street Department, Steve King, the other Steve King.
So just a couple of things, I want to touch on here real quick. So the speedhumps are going in right now as we speak. I've gotten several emails from the council about locations, we've honored them, they've been put in our spreadsheet, our location spreadsheet, they've been forwarded to the contractor, there's a couple of locations, I don't have them off the top of my head, that aren't going to go in right away, because we will be doing resurfacing work on those streets, so we don't want to put them in, have to take them out, have to put them back in again. Yeah, we just don't want to do that, that's not, that's not efficient. Also, we've got two memorial benches that Matt has obtained that are going to go in Teal Crossing. Once the weather breaks here, we'll get the concrete pads poured, we'll get those installed, we are installing a new ADA access over there, as a matter of fact, I was over there today, so it'll be wheelchair accessible for them to get to the benches. And the paving work is going on now, our concrete work is going on now, paving is probably going to start in the next week or so, weather permitting. It's still a little cold out, but you'll be seeing asphalt work coming very soon, that's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Griffin, anything else to add?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. January, thank you. You have my report before you, please do go over it, there's a lot in it, there have been some updates to some existing matters, and I do want to call your attention to some new things. I do want to call your attention to something that is actually up there, the town talk on TIFs is this Thursday at 6:30 PM, as you can see there, there's been one change, Jim Higgins was the featured speaker who would be from London Witty, we instead are going to have Carl Sender, Mr. Higgins had a last-minute conflict that he could not move, so he cannot be there. There will be a panel of some people that will be familiar, but we wanted to get somebody who was new, they're going to focus the presentation on myths or misunderstandings about the economic development incentive utilization for tax increment financing and for what are called economic revitalization areas, commonly called tax abatement. We're going to have a question moment there too, we'll have index cards out there that can be distributed, you'll be able to question, pose your questions through your card to some of the presenters, as well as members of a response panel. We do encourage you, it'll be in Room Three of the Mike Anderson Convention Center, excuse me, Event Center, as part of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. That's this Thursday at 6:30. The rest is in my report, and unless you have questions about that, members of the council, I'll be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Moving on this evening to general orders, we have no first reading ordinances, we do have second readings on ordinance 25-06. This is an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code to modify planning and building department fees and charges.
Motion to approve, Mr. President, for discussion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Counselor Hardaway. Open for discussion.
To Michael Ricardo, since this is in Sheila's, the building fees, and we're raising these in these type financials, was there a need for a public notice?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. January, if I may respond?
Yes.
There is no need for a public notice for the fees, however, there is a provision in the law that requires a notice after your adoption, so should the council favor this and pass them this evening, we have to make work of getting them advertised in legal notice, 90 days following that, they're enforceable, but not sooner, so that's the provision that you're probably recalling.
Thank you, yes, thank you, Michael.
Good question, any other discussion from the council? Anything else to add, Mr. Griffin?
Nothing else to add, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure, Mr. President. Counselwoman Haynes Edwards. Counselwoman Chandler Felton. Counselwoman Uselak. Councilman Pettit. Counselwoman Hardaway. President Bella. Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 25-07, it is an ordinance, the town of Maryville, to include the payment in advance of board or commission allowance law as currently in force, as ordinance number 21-09. This ordinance will amend and clarify the existing terms relative to the Parks and Recreation Department.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, second by Counselor Hardaway, for approval of ordinance 25-07. Open for discussion. Hearing no discussion, Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Counselwoman Haynes Edwards. Counselwoman Uselak. Counselwoman Chandler Felton. Councilman Pettit. Counselwoman Hardaway. President Bella. Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 25-09, it's an ordinance to amend the Maryville Municipal Code to reestablish the federal and the local forfeiture and seizure assets funds. Mr. Griffin, can you add something to this before we?
Mr. President, thank you, members of the council, you currently have a property seizure fund that you've had in the books, however, we also have local seizures that occasion in the course of doing law enforcement, they're co-mingled, and that technically shouldn't happen, because it's the position of our external auditors and the federal government, that the federal forfeit seized assets are technically a part of a grant. If you pass this ordinance, you're going to fix all of that, it'll essentially convert the one fund into two, essentially it'll retain its character as the Federal Forfeit and Seized Asset Fund. It also will have the police department identify the portion of the corpus that's local, and it gives a process whereby the Clerk Treasurer's Office will take steps to move out the money that's from local, put it into the new created local seized asset fund, and both will be available for use. It just corrects something that we needed to do on our book, it's almost housekeeping, but it is important because of the element I just described, that we get your favor on this, please.
Thank you. Mr. Pettit, did you have a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Uselak, for approval of ordinance 25-09 on second reading. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call vote, please.
Sure. Counselwoman Haynes Edwards. Counselwoman Chandler Felton. Counselwoman Uselak. Councilman Pettit. Counselwoman Hardaway. President Bella. Six in favor.
Six in favor, the motion carries. Moving on tonight to ordinance 25-10, it's an ordinance to amend the terms related to the rainy day fund of the town of Maryville pursuant to Indiana Code 36-1-8-5.1. Mr. Griffin?
Mr. President, the town of Maryville, as many municipalities in Indiana, has established a rainy day fund, however, some of the language that existed in the code needed to be updated, it references statutes that have been profoundly modified, including the local government, excuse me, the LIT or Local Income Tax Funds. We also needed to update what was permissible to be spent out of it, so I'm hopeful that you will favor this with your vote, and it won't change what's in our book, it just will update what can go into the fund, and more importantly, what can come out.
Very good, thank you, Michael. What's the pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Uselak, second by Counselor She, for approval of ordinance 25-10. Any other discussion? Hearing done, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Sure. Counselwoman Haynes Edwards. Counselwoman Chandler Felton. Counselwoman Uselak. Councilman Pettit. Counselwoman Hardaway. President Bella. Six in favor.
Six in favor, the motion carries. We got tonight to resolutions, we have resolution 25-20, it's a resolution of the town council, the town of Maryville acting as a municipal park authority of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana. Mr. Pettit made reference to this earlier in his report. Mr. Pettit, did you want to make a motion tonight?
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 25-20, I have a question for Michael.
Let's get a second first, please.
Yes.
Proper seconds all around, go ahead, Mr. Pettit.
Michael, this resolution is a resolution, obviously signed and attested, but then in back of it, there's an Assurance of Accessibility Compliance with Architectural Barriers Act of 1968, and then there's also an attachment, you get the second page, U.S. Department of Interior Assurance of Compliance, that's all covered in the resolution by Tagi.
Mr. President, Counselor Pettit, yes, that is correct, this is actually what you adopted five years ago as well, some of the language has been updated. By having that included in your resolution, it makes you immediately eligible to start applying for any federally backed, which basically we would get through the Indiana Department of Natural Resources, any federally backed grant monies, that's part of the reason we want to do this by April 15th this year, so that we're eligible in this upcoming round of grant distribution. So yes, they are basically simple federal recitals of compliance with accessibility rules, which you've been following since you've been a community, and you followed five years ago and five years before that, so, but it does now include it in the resolution.
Okay, so the president and the clerk treasurer will sign and attest all three of these?
That is our hope, if you pass it.
Any other discussion on this resolution tonight? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Michael, Jerry, and especially Tagi Ashami, and the residents that came to the public input meetings and answered the survey, this is well overdue, hopefully this will take the park system into the future in the next five years.
For sure. Moving on tonight to Board of Zoning Appeals and Large Gathering Actions, I'll call on Ms. Shine.
Thank you, Mr. President, our first petitioner is DVG Team Incorporated, Greg Lorick, on behalf of Drive &amp; Shine. Special exception approval to allow a car wash. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from Section 21-136 in a C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District to allow a car wash and lube center at 740 East 81st Avenue. Petitioner is seeking to turn the former old Chicago restaurant into a proposed car wash with indoor/outdoor vacuums and a lube center. Petitioner states that granting special exception approval would not be detrimental or endanger the public health and safety morals and comfort or general welfare. The proposed special exception will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other properties in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood, because the Drive &amp; Shine is a modern car wash facility that incorporates advanced technologies, ensures minimal disruption to the neighboring properties. Additionally, Drive &amp; Shine adheres to stringent environmental regulations and professional management practices to prevent nuisances while continuously maintaining a well-kept operation. Furthermore, the desired site is a vacant restaurant, therefore developing the site into a high-end car wash would not only increase the property values in the surrounding areas, the establishment of the special exception will not impede the normal or orderly development improvements of the surrounding areas. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, and other facilities already exist, and Drive &amp; Shine will provide an advanced infrastructure, including water cycling system and effective drainage solutions, adequate measures will be taken to provide ingress and egress and minimize traffic congestion on the streets to include designated lane and well-marked parkways and signs throughout the site. The request for special exception approval is a must, because without it, the petitioner business cannot exist. The hours of operation will be 7:30 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, 8:30 AM to 7:00 PM. There will be approximately five to seven employees, and this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. And Mr. President and members of the council, this petition was passed for with one absent, and there was a condition on the petition that the, the plan, traffic plan be reviewed. There was a big discussion about the traffic plan, and as I told the Board of Zoning Appeals, this is to say whether we want to have a car wash or whether we don't want to have a car wash. However, when it gets to the engineering, they would have to do a study on that, to engineer, for the engineers to look at. I just want to make that clear, that there would have to be a traffic study, once it gets to the engineers, to see how the traffic is going to flow.
Mr. Ban?
Thank you, Mr. President, and Sheila, I want to thank you for taking care of my report, so, my presentation, did a fine job. My name is Jeff Ban, I'm a principal with DVG Team, an engineering and surveying company in Crown Point, and I'm joined with myself is Greg Lorick, our senior design engineer and project manager, and behind Greg is Frank Atami with Drive &amp; Shine. As Sheila indicated, the site is the old abandoned old Chicago restaurant, it sits on 1.7 acres, it's at the northwest corner of Rhode Island Street and Delaware Place, and it's highlighted in yellow on your vicinity exhibit that Greg passed out, and it's been unoccupied for about two years. We're here to request a special exception to permit a car wash in the current C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, and we received unanimous approval from the BZA at the February meeting, as Sheila indicated. The site plan that is kind of contained within it, exhibit that was passed out is kind of small, but we made a major smittle to the BZA, which had a lot of detail to that site plan, it includes a luxury car wash and an auto service center on the site. The car wash contains an enclosed car wash tunnel and an attached two-story enclosed, this is important to note, enclosed in Northwest Indiana, in the wintertime, to vacuum a car is very important, but it's an enclosed indoor vacuum building, and then there is a lube center on the north side of the site, and by design, and strategically designed, we put the lube center farthest north away from US 30, so you really don't see the lube center from US 30. The indoor vacuum structure is an architecturally significant structure, you can see from some of the renderings that are before you and that were passed out to you, this is a two-story, all glass, all brick, all masonry facility that we strategically positioned this on the site, so that this is the first thing you'll see of the car wash as we come into the site from US 30 and I-65. It's going to be very similar, Drive &amp; Shine just finished construction and development of a new facility in Crown Point on 109th Avenue, just east of Broadway, that's a great example of what will be at US 30 and I-65 at this site. The investment that is being proposed here is about $15 million, as you start looking at all of it, land costs, real estate development costs, and then construction and equipment and installation, which will generate about $150,000 worth of new property taxes. There are existing auto service uses, oriented uses in the neighborhood, and they're immediate to the project area. At the southeast corner of Rhode Island and 30 is the Take Five Lube Center, at the southwest corner of Rhode Island and 30 is the Luke Convenience Store and Gas Station, and on the northwest corner of Rhode Island and US 30 is an abandoned, vacated car, gas station, it may have been a Clark or Mobil, I can't remember the name of it, it may have been both of them over the many, many decades and years. of it. It may have been both of them over the many, many decades and years. So, I guess proposed use, the proposed use fits this kind of auto service oriented, uh, business, and it's similar in use in that neighborhood. Um, the proposed use also fits into the existing infrastructure at the site. All the utilities are available site, and they have the adequate capacity to handle, uh, this project. The existing public roadways of Delaware Place and Rhode Island Street are adequate to service the site and its proposed use. One thing to kind of think about and, and how this fits into the overall development, no development has happened and occurred in the area for over eight years. The Radisson Star Theater, the Radisson and the Star Theater were demolished in two thousand seventeen. That's been eight years ago. And as I think about it, and I grew up here in Maryville, I, I can't remember not having that facility there, but it's been that long since it's been demolished. The Twin Towers were demolished in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. And the Denny's and the Dairy Queen Buildings that were along Rhode Island, um, street were also demolished in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. The Drive-In Shine business is a real project, and it's ready to start today. And it's ready to start to invest its fifteen million dollars in Maryville today. And so, we request the council's support of the BZA's unanimous recommendation and approval of the project details and the findings of facts, and request an approval of the special exception to permit a car wash, car wash use at this site. So if there's any questions and details that, uh, of the staff report from Sheila, uh, Greg and myself and Frank are here to answer them.
Mr. Ban, how many cars are estimated per day to visit the car wash once it's in full operation?
President Bella, the, um, estimate we're getting from Drive-In Shine is a range of two hundred to six hundred per day. As you can imagine, that would, um, fluctuate depending on weather. You know, weekends, you get nice weather, they're busy. So, two hundred to six hundred cars per day.
That's a big range. Is there an average that you're experiencing like at Crown Point or other, uh, other buildings the same size?
Yeah, I think when you start thinking about the six hundred, that's after a lot of snow, and finally we get a nice day, and that's where everyone's going to get their car wash. I think we're talking about the averages of two to three hundred, uh, vehicles per day.
Okay. And are you okay if we approve this, uh, with the condition that it passed the traffic study satisfactory to the town?
Absolutely. We accept it at the BZA. From engineering perspective, we think that has to be proven as part of our smittles as we move forward. And then, as Sheila indicated, this is use. Do you want a car washer or not? If the answer is yes, then we've got to prove to you that that works here now, um, in, in a very functional engineering detailed way.
Fair enough. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes. What is your, um, fee for the car wash, drive-through car wash?
I, could you ask, ask that question again?
What is the fee for a car to go through your drive-through?
The fee?
The fee for the car wash.
You want to answer that, Frank?
Hello, my name is Frank Atami. Uh, we start at about ten dollars, and then we have the unlimited, that you can join for twenty-nine, for thirty-nine, forty-nine, and fifty-nine. And with that, you can actually use the inside facility absolutely for free. Well, we have the inside facility, it's heated. We have air, we have air blowers, we have, uh, we have vacuums, we have mat heaters for your mats, uh, and then we provide you with dry towels and wet towels, and actually bottles of espresso can do your, you know, all your inside on your windows. So, I think it's a great deal for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Ban, um, from a planning perspective, um, I had conversations with, um, engineering about the traffic review. Um, the traffic review may be one thing right now when we going through this, but if a development were to ever come to the other side, then it may affect what the traffic study is now. Do you have any prospect as to how we would look at that?
Yeah, I think we need to be looking at what the trip generations would be for this site, for this use. But in order for it adequately fit and address what might be in the neighborhood, we have to project, and we will need your input and the engineering department's input on what the anticipated land uses are going to be on the old White Coast site, uh, both east of our site and west of our site. And then we would forecast those trip generations and include those in a, uh, traffic study to analyze it under full development.
Thank you.
We can give you the zoning and what the zoning is for the land, but we have no idea what may show up there. We have nothing on the books.
Right. And I think what we need to do is look at it from the more intense assumptions from a development perspective. We have to be more conservative from the traffic analysis. And, and we will work with the town to agree that this is the use that we're going to study in the future.
Sure. Shauna, you had a question?
Oh, yes. Um, with your memberships, are there any members, is there any type of programming where you all offer full, full service, where your employees would detail the cars?
Uh, well, uh, I think with us opening, I think we are in the process, we have one in Shererville, we're looking at a location in Munster, we're looking at a location in San John. We've already closed, uh, a location in, uh, Michigan City, and we're doing one in Winfield, and we're putting another one in, um, La Porte, and, uh, actually, Portage also. So that would make it very convenient for, to actually the customers. Doesn't matter where you work, where you live, in Northwest Indiana, you can always go to a Drive-In Shine and use the facilities with the same actually, um, you know, membership. And, uh, so, um, I'm sorry, can you repeat your question one more time?
Sure thing.
I'm actually going to answer it for you.
Is there a full-service option where if some, one of your employees would, we can drop, bring our car, drop our car off, they wash and clean the inside outside?
Well, we have facilities like that in, you know, actually Crown Point, which, which we haven't opened yet, because that part of business is going to be, we are, um, we're going to have a full service, uh, you know, actually facility there. And you come in, you get out your car, and our, and our people get inside there and vacuum your car, do the windows, wipe down the dash and console. And it's going to be on actually belt, just like the car wash. So from the start to the end, it will probably take us about eight to ten minutes. So it's extremely quick, efficient.
So it wouldn't be coming to Maryville, it would just only be in Crown Point?
Yeah, that, that, that's correct. There are numerous kinds of facilities they've built that we've worked on. One of Alperazo is a full service, where you have an interior wash, uh, from a, it's got a belt that you get out of your car, and then it gets attacked by four people, and it goes on the belt, and they clean all the inside and detail the inside. Also has a, a car wash tunnel, and also has the interior vac. This site does not have the room to do that. It's too narrow. Uh, we would have otherwise liked to, but the site doesn't have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Anything else to add, Ms. Schein?
No, Mr. President, thank you.
What's the pleasure of the council? Is there a motion to approve or reject?
I will make the motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak.
I'm second.
Second by Councilor Shee.
President Bella, would this be a motion to approve contingent upon the?
Well, we can ask, Marjorie, did you put that, uh, contingency in about the traffic study even though we did discuss it?
Yes, I will. I make the motion to approve with the contingency of a traffic study. How's that?
Counselor, does that sound right?
That's, that's sufficient.
It almost sounds like just to do one. Should we satisfactory one, or?
I, I think that's what the council in general contemplated, and so, yeah, and that's, and that's what also, what the BZA, as gentlemen mentioned, alluded to.
Is your second?
A second. Yes, my second stand.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Mr. President, as I said two weeks ago, and, and I've had conversations, um, with Sheila, with Joe, with Jeff, um, I am declaring a conflict of interest. I have a financial interest with Drive-In Shine. They have two billboards in Crown Point that I financially benefited from in my work as real estate manager. Uh, so I will be abstaining from this vote, as I told Haji a long time ago what my position was and that I would be abstaining. And I'm not going to go into any further detail, Jeff. You and I go back way too far.
That's fine. Any other discussion from the council?
My only, um,
Mr. January.
Yes, sir. My, my only observation is I think that, um, we have to do something, uh, because if we continue to parcel off this land to different developments, we're going to miss a huge opportunity to actually put something there that can really benefit the town. Uh, it's tearing down a restaurant that's not being used. Uh, but that was the entertainment capital of Northwest Indiana. And if we keep carving off pieces of it, we won't be able to do anything substantial, substantial, uh, there. So I would really ask the council and, uh, the RDA and the Economic Development Department that we, we, we can't just continue to let little parcels go away, because before you know it, we won't have anything. And, uh, so, that's my comment.
This is the only parcel, right, Sheila? Just not, uh, part of the White family?
That's correct.
Yes.
So this is already a separate piece of land that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, with respect to, uh, Councilor Pettit, let's do a roll call vote then, please. Please be on the record.
Yes. Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Aye.
Councilman Pettit.
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor, one abstention.
The motion carries, Senator.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, our next petitioner is Three Brothers Investment. They're the petitioner and the owner in a special exception for a car wash. It's car wash night. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from two, Section twenty-one dash one thirty-six on two point six one acres in an existing C-two community commercial zoning district to open a new car wash as an, on an existing convenience store and fueling station. The established maintenance and operation of the proposed car wash addition will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health and safety or general welfare in accordance with the comprehensive plan, because the new facilities offers a convenient services to the community. The new car wash will satisfy applicable calls while using environmentally safe, um, detergents. The proposed special exception will not be injurious to the establishment of the proposed and will not impede the normal or orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the district. The car wash will not, will be on an existing property and meet building setback requirements. The car wash will utilize existing utilities on site. An adequate queue lane will serve the car wash, and an escape lane will be provided. There is a public necessity for this, a special exception approval that, because the, because the addition cannot take place without granting the special exception approval. The hours of operation for the car wash will be from five a.m. to ten p.m. The car wash will be a self-service system and will not add any employees. There is one employee per shift when the store manager is working there, and two employees. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Thank you. Well said. Um, my name is Peter Andreou. I'm with Family Express. I'm the VP of Development. I oversee design and construction. So there's a convenience store and a fueling station there now. We'd like to add a car wash to, for an amenity to the, to our customers. Uh, it's just a single overhead car wash. We have about forty in our chain of the car washes, and we, it's not a big number. I think it's around the tune of average forty, fifty cars per day. Some sites busier, some less. Um, we're using state-of-the-art equipment, uh, energy-efficient, uh, low water usage compared to the previous ones. We, we do have some of the older ones that we're using in excess of a hundred gallons per wash. Now we're down to the, the, our comprehensive wash is about thirty-four gallons, and they're as low as eleven gallons per wash. We'll include an oil and dirt interceptor. We're using existing utilities on site. The project has been sent to state. We did receive construction design release, and we're just going through this process and, uh, respectfully request your permission for the exception. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Andreus, is it a, a brushless car wash? Does it just spray? Does it have?
It's dual.
Dual, okay.
Yes.
Questions from the council?
Well, I'll make a motion, Mr. President. I do have one historical question.
Motion by Mr. Pettit for approval. Is there a second?
Well, I wanted to ask a question. And what is your regular fee for a car wash?
I knew you were going to ask that. Um, I want to say it starts around seven dollars, I believe, there, for the basic, and could go up to, I'd say around twelve to fourteen dollars. Uh, there is a monthly subscription for the basic for twenty-five dollars, uh, you know, for the wash and the basic dry. And then, uh, we do have a forty-dollar unlimited subscription for the, we call it the works, which is all the bells and whistles, the undercarriage, the rinse and the whole.
Does that forty-dollar fee cover the year?
Per month. That's a monthly fee.
Oh, per month.
And you could cancel at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
I will second Sean's motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Yuzlak.
Mr. President, uh, sir.
Yes, sir.
There used to be a McDonald's
That's correct.
in that building. What franchise was the gas station? Was it always a Family Express?
No, I want to say, this is before my time, but I think it was a Valero, possibly.
Valero, thank you, with the McDonald's. So there has been a drive-through. Traffic has gone around this in the past, out there in connection with getting out onto one hundred first Avenue, getting out onto Broadway.
That's correct.
It, I, I, I go there and get my gas, because I work in Amerplex, so.
Great, thank you.
I don't see any traffic conflicts in that, that, I mean, we know all about Broadway and what the state of Indiana hasn't done, but that's another time, another discussion.
Anything else from the council? Mr. January, roll call, please.
Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Haines Edwards.
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Aye.
Councilman Pettit.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, and motion carries. Welcome to Maryville.
Welcome.
We're going to have a lot of clean cars in Maryville.
Lot of car washes.
Well, we got a couple of used car lots here that are going to come up next, so.
All right, Ms. Schein.
Petitioner is Hamad Ahmad. He's the petitioner. The owner is AJZ Maryville LLC. Special exception approval for a used car lot. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from Section twenty-one dash one thirty-six on two point six one acres in an existing C-three highway commercial zoning district to open up a used car dealership at seventeen seventy-seven West eighty-first Avenue. The dealership will hold approximately two hundred to two hundred and twenty vehicles with ten to fifteen parking spots for customer. The proposed site is the now vacant Subaru dealership. The petitioner has already signed the lease with AJZ Maryville. The service department will consist of eight service bays to perform oil changes, tune-ups, tire changes, and rotation, wheel alignments, et cetera, everything except engine and transmission replacement. The establishment, maintenance, or operation of the proposed special exception will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, and general welfare, and is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, because the used car dealership would adhere to all zoning regulations, as well as make sure to minimize any negative impact to the public health and surrounding neighbors. The proposed special exception will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of the other properties and substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood, because care will be given to, again, minimize any negative impact on the surrounding neighbors, as well as take the appropriate measure to ensure that the property's design will not disrupt the overall aesthetics of the neighborhood. The establishment of the proposed special exception will not impede the normal or orderly development of the improvement of the surrounding properties for the permitted use in the district, because the proposed special exception is in accordance and intended for the zoning district and does not conflict with any existing or future development. Adequate utilities, access roads, drainage exits will be upgraded if necessary. Adequate measures will be taken to ensure proper ingress and egress. Traffic markings will be placed strategically to control the traffic and avoid any interference. There is a public necessity for this special exception approval in that the dealership cannot operate without granting special exception approval. This site This site is a vacant car dealership site. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and Saturdays, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and closed on Sundays. There will be approximately 10 to 15 employees, and this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Thank you, Sheila. Have you guys operated a dealership in the past?
Yes, we are operating right now in a dealership in Chicago. Most, we've been in the car business since 2000.
Okay.
And most of our cars are like newer cars, start off are like 2020 till 2025, most of our cars. If we get any cars that trade in like 2018s or 2016s or 2017s, we'll put them, we service them, we'll put them in the lot. Other than that, we send them to the auction.
Okay. So are you going to do repairs there? Because this is the old Subaru dealership, but there's bays, available, garages.
Our repairs is going to be for our own vehicles when we bring them in to get them serviced before we put them in the lot and sell them. And second of all, either we offer warranties for our customers, which is our dealer warranty, we service, if anything, if a tech engine comes in or either brakes, they needed to be serviced, we service in our location, or with the warranty that we give to the customers, they come back and service it with us.
I see, okay. Counselors, this is my district. I have no objections, so.
Thank God, Counselor.
Your motion for approval?
I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Yuzlak, second by Mr. Pettit for approval. Anything else to add, Sheila?
No, Mr. President, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Mr. January, roll call.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir.
Counselwoman Hens Edwards.
Hello.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Aye.
Councilman Pettit.
Aye.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Yes.
President Bella.
Aye.
Five in favor, one against.
Motion carries. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you so much.
Our last petitioner for the evening is Amador Gutierrez. Petitioner, owner Omar Lopez, special exception approval to allow a dine-in restaurant. Petitioner is seeking special exception approval from Section 21-136 to operate a dine-in Mexican restaurant in a C3 highway commercial district on 2225 West Lincoln Highway. Said restaurant, El Hamador, will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. El Hamador is a seasoned restaurant chain with seven other located, locations that are successful. This site was a previous restaurant, therefore the infrastructure already exists to support another restaurant. Furthermore, the establishment of the proposed special exception approval will not impede the normal or orderly development improvements of the surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the district because the restaurant will not obstruct or hinder other businesses. The parking is adequate for the restaurant. The restaurant has 80 seats on the patio and 106 seats inside the restaurant. The restaurant will employ approximately 16 individuals for this petitioner only, at this location only, and the vote that was taken was five to zero.
Evening, Counsel. John Matheson, broker and consultant for Amador Gutierrez and El Hamador Restaurant. And so I think this one was pretty straightforward. Used to be the Arrow's Patio most recently, but been closed down. El Hamador opened in Winfield about 12 years ago, almost 13 years ago now, and has since done similar things, gone to Griffith, gone to Porter, Chesterton, and taken over existing restaurants and done the same exact thing, pretty much uses exactly what's there, not looking to alter any except for bringing the El Hamador brand there. So welcome, any questions or comments on it?
Questions?
No, I was going to ask him. I thought they had a facility and a restaurant in Winfield.
What makes your restaurant stand out from all the other Mexican restaurants that we have here in the town of Maryville?
My prices, as low down than all the prices they have now in the restaurants, and maybe we have entertainment. I'm not sure yet, but maybe in the summer, in the patio.
Thank you.
I have a question. There have been so many restaurants in this particular location, what makes you sure that yours will be sustainable?
Because I'm, I'm working there, so I'm working like 12 years in another restaurant. So we're working there and try to make everything right.
What's up? I think in his other locations, a lot of them are smaller. Winfield is the idea to replicate what he's done in Winfield. In Winfield, he's gone from maybe originally 2,000 square feet and just keeps adding on. And so the idea, yeah, to seat 300, he just had last weekend an event with 150, and so this location really gives him that same footprint that he can replicate with exactly what's located there on 109th outside of the seasons.
Anything else from the council?
So at all your other locations, they're thriving greatly? Are they over, are you overbooked? Are you constantly needing seats for your guests? Because it says you have five locations.
And I don't think he's closed, when he's gone to a location, I don't think he's closed any, other than he briefly opened on Broadway, and then this opportunity presented itself. So that's much more like he has in Winfield.
Will your parking lot be well-lit?
Yeah, and, and the longer-term goal here as well for him specifically as a business owner is to eventually purchase this property. We're in talks with the owner on trying to do that. So this would be the first one that he really owns the property and can put a lot into, to his own property, so that parking and knowing that the parking lot's in good shape and that the parking lot lights are well-lit is something that's done in Winfield. I think he would want to replicate here as well.
If approved, when do you plan on opening?
Maybe by the end of this month. Depends if we have enough employers for service. Maybe open by the end of this month.
The end of this month?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Wow, thank you. That's fast. That's fast.
Yeah, he's, he's been in there for a couple months, doing a lot of the...
Okay.
Getting it up to date, because it's sat for a little bit.
What was there before?
It was called Arrow's Patio, and it was Villa de Sol, I think, before that as well.
What, what did you call it?
Arrow's, E-R-O-S Patio.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's the old Stones Bones.
Yeah, it was Stones Bones.
Originally, yeah.
Villa de Sol.
Yeah.
Anything else from the council?
No.
Mr. President, I'm going to make a motion to approve this special exception. My thought is, just as I did with the used car lot, you know, the uses we have that come in, but they're occupying empty buildings, which is, you know, one of the, should be one of the goals for us for economic development, so we don't have vacant buildings around town. Let's give this young gentleman a chance.
Yeah, I second the motion.
Any other discussion from the council? Hearing done, Mr. January.
Yes, yes, Mr. President. Counselwoman Hens Edwards.
Aye.
Counselwoman Chandler Felton.
Aye.
Counselwoman Yuzlak.
Aye.
Councilman Pettit.
Aye.
Counselwoman Hardaway.
Aye.
President Bella.
Aye.
Six in favor.
Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Mexican restaurants, good ones, too.
Moving on tonight to announce this, next council meeting is April 22nd, and the RDC meeting is April 22nd at 6:15.
15.
6:15. There's no objection, we will adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
What's up? You're high-stopping, huh?